Good evening and welcome to February 18th, 2025, common council city of Connerville. Our rights for the pledge allegiance led by Councilor Dana Phillips.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to remain standing for your invocation, pastor.
Father, we just, we just come humbly to you and I, God, and I, I just pray, God, for correction and for this counsel, God, and I pray, God, that you continue to, to, to allow us to be a, a lighthouse on a hill, God, to be a city that thrives and, and moves forward and prospers and, and operates in the spirit of unity. We love you, Lord, and I thank you, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. A reminder, please turn your cell phone off. We will begin with roll call.
Councilwoman McQueen?
Here.
Councilwoman Barrett?
Present.
Councilman Williams, Jr.?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Rob?
Here.
Councilman Barry?
Present.
Councilman Collins?
Everyone has their minutes from the January 21st, two calls we're going to make. Are there any additions or corrections? I'm sorry, but February 3rd, got the wrong one in there. Are there any additions or corrections to that? You have to entertain a motion for approval.
Motion second.
Have a motion second. On favor, six and five is saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, we're in new business, I'm going to make a change here. We have Alan Schraub from Nova, he's going to give an update. I'm going to do him first since he's zoomed, so we don't have to stick around, so. Good evening, Alan, how are you?
Thank you all. Uh, you can tell from behind me that I'm calling you all from Calgary, Alberta, where it's currently minus 15 degrees Fahrenheit. So, um, you're in a much better spot regardless of what temperature it is in Connerville today. Uh, I, I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time. It's been a while since I've given the group an update in terms of the progress we're making at the recycling facility. Um, I would say that, uh, construction is proceeding very well. In fact, the first two lines of the four that we're installing are mechanically complete. And the first line is operating as we speak, and we're fine tuning that line in preparation for us to be able to ship commercial samples to our customers and ultimately start commercial sales. The last two lines are also well underway under construction. So, we're doing really well and on schedule, if maybe not even a little ahead of where we thought we would be, um, at this point in time. Um, I think, to in terms of the progress we're making, uh, we're, uh, a little over 15 employees at the site, on our way to 120. Um, and soon we'll be able to, um, say that we're at that maximum rate. So, we need all of those employees on site before those last two lines are started up. The fact that we've turned that first line over to operations, um, says that those employees are trained, um, and they're ready to be able to operate that, that machinery without the aid and, um, and backing of the, uh, equipment manufacturers that installed the equipment. So, we're making very good progress in terms of the, the numbers of employees, the quality of employees that we've been able to, uh, to attract, and so things are going very, very well. Maybe, uh, the last thing is, uh, we're planning a grand opening event, uh, for the week of May 15th. And so, within the next few days, you all will get some invitations, uh, to that grand opening as well. So, if you want to mark that week down on your calendar, um, it'll likely be a, a, a Thursday event, um, with a celebration that evening as well for, um, everybody that's been involved in the project. Well over 100 people, um, including yourselves and, uh, the employees and the, um, equipment manufacturers and the construction company and, and other government officials that have supported us through this entire process, um, will get a really good chance to celebrate, uh, the accomplishment. So, I'm hoping that the next time I get to talk to you here, we'll be able to show some video and some pictures of the facility actually operating. Um, I'll be on site next week, and we've hired a videographer to do a drone, uh, flyover of the facility so that we can start showing, um, everyone what this facility does and the products that it makes. So, that's all I really wanted to do this evening, and I can open up to any questions that you might have.
It's exciting, well, really, it's, can't wait to sit, to tour the plant and see what you've, what you've done. It's really exciting.
Well, thank you, I can't wait to show it to you.
I'll, I'll say this, I don't have any questions, and I don't think anyone else does, but, uh, when I walked in that building five years ago, um, old, dark, dungey, and you walk into it now, it's, looks like a brand new facility, and it looks like a mini-city in there, basically, with all the equipment. It's really amazing what they've done with this facility, completely transformed it. Doesn't look anything like it did before. Um, it's exciting to have you guys here and exciting to see it up and running in full operation, and look forward to seeing you next week when you get here.
Well, thanks. I mean, I, I'm there every couple of weeks, and, um, I feel the same way you do every time I walk in there. So, um, it's, uh, we're really excited about, uh, about what we've been able to do there, and, and it's, it's just a recognition, one, of how important plastics recycling is, um, and that, uh, we plan on being a leader within that market, and that's why we've designed this facility the way we have. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye. Stay warm.
All right, move on down to...
Proclamation.
Where'd that come from? Oh, I'm sorry, too, sorry, sorry. Okay, we went down to the mayor's proclamation. There was one on here, I don't know where it came from. I do have a proclamation for Kappa Kappa Kappa. Whereas Kappa 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 Inc., commonly known as Tri-Kappa, is a philanthropic sorority with nearly 8,000 members, and whereas Tri-Kappa was founded in 1901 to promote charity, culture, and education with the state of Indiana, and whereas Tri-Kappa membership is located solely in the state of Indiana, and whereas Tri-Kappa members give over 300,000 hours annually to philanthropic endeavors, and whereas Tri-Kappa chapter has raised over 1.5 million annually, given directly to charities, cultural establishments, and deserving college students in Indiana, and whereas Tri-Kappa celebrates their membership and philanthropic activities in our Indiana communities the fourth week of February each year, and whereas Tri-Kappa membership celebrates the spirit of volunteerism and kindness throughout the state of Indiana. Now therefore, I Chad Frank, Mayor of City of Connerville, do hereby proclaim February 16th, 2025, 2025, and February 22nd, 2025, as Tri-Kappa Week in the city of Connerville, invite all citizens to duly note this occasion. So, thank you very much for all you do, Tri-Kappa. Okay, let's move on down to department reports, we'll start with Chief Jones.
Good evening. Um, my report for the fire problem for January, start off with the overtime. January was a three pay month, so overtime's, uh, going to be just a little bit high, plus it captures like the last, uh, few weeks of December, which is usually, uh, a lot of vacation. Uh, we had a total for January of $10,823.40. Uh, the manpower shortage portion of that was $7,740.20. The scheduled overtime was $2,177.28, and we did have an incident, well, we had to call in, uh, several guys. The total overtime for that was $905.92. Uh, moving down to fuel usage, uh, we used a total of, um, 392, well, the rest of the year's still in there, I have to look that out. Uh, 392 gallons for a total cost $1,443.53. Uh, incidents, uh, I have the fire and the EMS backwards on your sheet, uh, the incidents, we had a total of 186, excuse me, uh, 149 of those were EMS-related incidents, 30 were fire-related incidents, and we had seven auto accidents. Training hours for the month, we have 72 instructed hours of training, uh, 11 of those were EMS-related training hours and 61 fire-related training hours. Uh, we have 10 fire inspections for the month, and we didn't have any hours of fire investigation. Uh, all of the stuff that I discussed can be seen in the rest of the packet with some of the new reporting. If you want to go through all that, some of it gives you a bit better information than what, what did, uh, last year. Uh, the only other thing I have is that we are still currently taking, accepting applications for this, uh, next, uh, hiring process. Uh, we're taking applications through the 28th, and, uh, you can download those, uh, from our Facebook page, or you can go to the city's website and go to forms and documents, download the application. They have to be turned in on the 28th by 4:00 p.m. Uh, you can turn those in at Fire Station 1 or if you're at City Hall. And the, uh, agility and written test is scheduled for March the 8th, hopefully with weather permitting, so. That's all I have. No questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Bullock.
Good evening.
All right, starting out with the January's monthlies, now, as you can see, my overtime's just over 20,000. Um, obviously takes in part of, uh, wrote everybody I've known for that took in part of December, and that's with three men down, uh, during that time, so. Uh, our gallons of fuel is 2,084. Our, uh, total incidents for, for the month of January is 561. Is there any, uh, questions on those totals? All right, for department training, we had 227 hours, that's including a couple of guys going away for, uh, weeks-long school. Um, our K-9 had eight hours of training, um, we had three deployments the last month of traffic defense, uh, residents in Franklin County, um, they requested our services, uh, and the city, residents in the city. Um, for those that don't know, we are, we have currently one K-9, so I am adding another K-9, uh, I have retired for the department, uh, Tyler Russell, who's on third shift, he's going to be our next K-9 guy, and he leaves next month, middle of the month sometime, to go to Bonwick to get his K-9 training. Any, any questions with that? Our detectives, they took in 16 cases, 11 of them are closed, um, 15 ICAT cases, only one of those are closed. Uh, just to make everybody aware of our three new officers right now, they completed a 40-hour, they are doing the FTOs right now with ride-alongs, trying to, you know, run our systems, they're, they're new at, at the job, so I'm hoping to have them out on the road working March 1st. So, that's what we're shooting for, to get them out on the road, to leave those some of those open spots. Uh, we are currently taking apps, also, uh, to the 28th of this month, that's the process so far on, on the apps. Uh, drug collection, uh, marijuana, we had 75 grams, heroin, fentanyl, we had 11 grams, meth, five grams, cocaine, half a gram, 17 pills, uh, six needles, and the, uh, for the drug and paraphernalia, it's outlined just at the bottom of the sheet for you. Any, any questions on January's report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Wilson.
Good evening. A whole lot outside of reports, uh, report on the month of January, see all of you have the utility report, that's kind of good. Um, wanted to touch on the wastewater treatment plant monthly totals, just kind of put an optic to the amount of flow that we treat, like I was saying earlier today, um, in order to, um, the 144 million gallons, and you all know what the size of a football field is, we could, if you dig that out 58 foot deep and fill it up, that's how much we did for the month of January, um, just to put an optic on that. Or, uh, you know, the Olympic-sized swimming pools, 660,000 gallons of water, we could fill it up 220,000, or 220 times without them, just to put a, you know, just a little optic to how much flow that we get the plant a month. Um, the water plant, we pumped, uh, 78 million gallons for the month of January. The utility side of, of that, the, uh, street department, we had, um, you know, it's the winter months kind of slows down, so we stopped, you know, that winter, you know, we've had what probably an average of 17, 18 inches of snows this, uh, this winter, so we've been out plowing quite a bit, um, the, uh, cleaning, trying to clean the streets as much as we can, um, keeping up with the sidewalks, assaulting pre-treatment, uh, I think the street department's done a great job of it, keeping, keeping everything clean. Um, we are still, um, trying to, uh, fix, I guess, uh, we've heard a lot of complaints about maybe some snow piled up on the sides of the road, I want to kind of hit on that tonight. Um, we try to come down the roads, um, and put the snow at the best possible angle on the side. Sometimes we do trap a car in, it's, it happens, um, sometimes the businesses get upset that we don't come back through and open up their lanes. Um, we do try to come back through as much as we can and help out, you know, the business is down central, but sometimes with the amount of snow that we get and, uh, the amount of people that might come in or might not come in on that overtime shift to, to push snow at, you know, 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning, sometimes we can't get back to that driveway so quickly, so just kind of wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page and understood that we, we do try, and, uh, just to be patient sometimes, goes a long way. Um, and then, transfer station, we, uh, did 383 tons for the street transportation, public disposal was 241 tons, the total waste at the landfill was 624 tons, and we did 30 ton recycling, and took in a little over 14,000 for the month of, uh, January transfer station. Does anybody have any questions on any of those here? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on down to Chief Harden.
So, I should have a copy of my January 2025 report. Had a total of 365 calls for service for the month, had a total of 4,088 miles. It's still pretty good, um, and I'll touch on my yearly report here in a minute, but we've got a lot of just general bug sickness going around, a lot of flu, seeing a little bit of COVID mixed in there, um, and, uh, we have an older population, and a large percentage of our, of our patients are in the 70 to 79-year-old range, and some of them just don't have the reserve to, to fight it off, you know, like someone who's a little younger. So, uh, that's probably one of the reasons that we're seeing the kind of elevated call numbers, uh, that we have for lots of them. Uh, you see my fuel usage and fuel type rebate, uh, there's a number write-off to the right-hand side, the year-to-date is 2898, that was all for all 2024, that's how much fuel rebate you guys submitted for all 2024. So, $3,000 isn't a huge amount in the realm of the city, but every little bit helps. Um, and right below that, uh, you can see that I obviously can't give a lot of details, but we, uh, did have two crews on scene that helped, uh, increase the population by the, of the city of Connerville by one. So, that doesn't happen very often, we always kind of say, you know, we, we get called a lot when people are going out of this world, but we don't often get to see a reverse of that when somebody comes in, so, kind of cool. Um, does anybody have any questions from the monthly report? Uh, in January, I said that I would be back with yearly report, um, so that, uh, some of the numbers could be kind of finalized, um, as it goes through the billing cycle. I'm not going to read everything, I'm just going to, uh, kind of point out some highlights, but we did have a total of 4,111 calls for service, that was up 235 over the previous year, 53,271 miles, which was up, uh, 5,190 over the previous year. We were under budget, generated, uh, 1.081 million in revenue, which was up 60,000 and change over the previous year.
When did we put the new rates in? Was that in 2022 for 2023? We have a bunch of new rates.
So, we did, I believe in 22 for 23, but the, uh, with the Medicaid increase was this year, was in 24.
24.
So, that has helped us quite a bit.
That's why I wanted to double check.
Of capturing that, that revenue, so. Um, see, we have two ambulances that are still on order, um, I did go out and do a pre-inspection on the first one yesterday, um, went out and looked through it, they're putting in radios, final assembly-type stuff, uh, it's in, that's a dealer in Indianapolis. So, hopefully we'll have that in the next one to two weeks. There's a few little, uh, things that I want corrected, uh, before they deliver it, so I figure if we're spending $270,000, I, I want it the way I want it.
And for sanity's sake, what year ambulance does that replace you?
That is replaced, well, uh, the oldest one we have right now is a 1997, um, so it's, it's all reliable, but, uh, it's, it's definitely seen better days, so, uh, hopefully we'll get, get that rotated out here for a second.
That's when people understand how old some of these equipment is out there.
Yeah, uh, so we, right now, we're running a 2025, uh, a 2017, a 2014, a 2011, and then a 1997, so, uh, it'll definitely bring the age of the trucks down, the average age of the trucks down quite a bit. We had a lot of training, we had a lot of, uh, multi-agency training, um, with EMA, that was really something that kind of came about in 2024 that we had not done before. Um, just kind of some quick statistics that I always find interesting. Um, so our number one age group is ages 70 to 79, that's our number one age group, 22% of our patients are in that age group. Uh, the next is 60 to 69, um, with 21.85%, so, um, 53% of our patients are female and 46 are male. There's some decimal places there, so if you add it up, it doesn't come out exactly right, but, um, you have more female patients than we have male patients. And the other thing, and I've heard this for years and years, oh, it's a weekend, you guys must be busy. Top two busiest days are Monday and Tuesday. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, those are in, uh, the, the Friday is the third busiest, so Saturday is the seventh busiest, actually. Don't know why, I followed these numbers for 20 years of my career, and it pretty rings true every year. So, uh, that your, your busiest days are Monday and Tuesday. So, there used to be a joke that we got busy because all the doctors were off playing golf on Tuesdays, and that's the reason we got called instead, I don't know if there's a lot of truth to that, but that was, that was, that was the old joke, so, um, the doctor's offices were closed. About four to five pages from the end, you see a page that kind of looks like this, this is what I was waiting on, this is the last thing I'll talk about. So, um, if you can see across the top, it'll say 2015 to 2024, it has the year, then it has calls. So, yeah, we responded to 4,111 calls, but only 2,417 of those were billable calls. So, not all the calls we go on are billable, not all those calls do we ever actually make a 13, well, I haven't even got a, uh, we'll get called on a rec unknown injuries, we end up getting disretardance before we get there because no one's hurt, it's property damage, don't know. Um, you can see the, uh, revenue, um, amount per trip and the advanced life support versus basic life support, uh, numbers. So, we build out, um, $2.77 million in 2024. If you take the next line, which is blue, it says mandatory adjustments, 1.44 million, that is the number that either by contract or by law, we have to adjust. So, you can charge whatever you want on a Medicare or Medicaid or insurance, but they're only going to pay a certain amount, whether that's law or by, uh, contract that we have with them, that is the amount that basically gets taken right off the top, that there's nothing we can do about it. Then you can see adjusted charges and the revenue, these numbers might vary a little from the other pages because the accounting practices of the billing service and the accounting practices of a city are a little bit different. They count it in the month in which it occurs, the city counts it as the month in which they receive it. So, numbers don't always jive 100%, but, um, so we collected 85% of the adjusted charges, that's, that's above industry standard. So, uh, we're down a little bit for 23, but we're still up, we're still right in there, uh, being very competitive industry-wide. And then you can see, the last thing I'll talk about is our payer mix, 65% are Medicare, 24% are Medicaid, 9% are private insurance, and 2% are private pay. So, our Medicare and our insurance, if you look at, across the entire country, we're flip-flopped. Most places are 50 to 60% insurance and a lower amount being Medicare or Medicaid. Ours are flip-flopped. So, um, that is one of the things that kind of affects our ability to collect is we're billing, the, we're billing the federal government or some, some, uh, some branch of that. So, that kind of affects, and they only pay what they're going to pay, so. I know that's a lot of information, if anybody has any questions on anything, you know, you're bored, you can't sleep, and you're reading, you're like, hey, I want to know more, let me know, we're happy, I, I can, I can talk all day on it. So, does anybody have any questions that pop right out? All right, thank you.
Superintendent Stew.
So, for my report, um, under department team, um, we did end up hiring Angie Brock, she started February 10th as our new secretary, and then Kelly Moffett, who was our secretary, moved up to the assistant superintendent role. And, um, and then we are currently taking applications for pool lifeguards, um, we are taking, um, applications for one more pool manager, and then concession workers for the pool, um, summer discovery camp, a few, uh, counselors that we will be taking applications for, and then sports concession workers, um, and, uh, maybe one or two grounds crew as well, I have quite a few coming back from last year, and, um, and so I may only need one or two more for this summer. So, that's kind of what's going on, um, with my team right now. And then, we have been busy training, um, the new secretary and then, uh, Kelly as well, because this is a whole new role for her, and so, um, we have a lot of training, uh, with the pool, because she'll be overseeing the pool this summer. So, um, we've been working on that, uh, each day and, um, just training through all of those different areas. Um, something else that we worked on is, uh, with our living well, aging well program that's growing, and we needed a space, or we wanted a space designated for them, and so, um, we turned our conference room downstairs, um, on the main level into a room for them to go into. It's open every day, they can go in, they can play cards, they can do a puzzle, um, we have snacks in there, and all of that is provided through the REED, um, health benefits funding that we, we get. And so, um, we were able to, uh, get some tables to put in there and, and make it just a comfortable space for them to come in and enjoy, and, and they have been utilizing it, it's really great to see, and, um, it's just a great space, uh, because the conference room wasn't really being utilized, and so, we just saw that need and, um, and they've really enjoyed that, so, um, we're happy to have that space for them. And then, uh, we were awarded the $30,000 again for 2025 from REED Health Community Benefits, and so, that, um, funding will be dispersed through different categories. One of them is living well, aging well, and summer discovery, and our sports, and some events that we have. So, um, we are thankful for that money again this year. And then, um, we are currently preparing for summer discovery programming, Logan is overseeing that and working with our managers to get them ready to go. Um, Scott Caldwell, who has been our manager in the past, or our, one of our managers, we have three, uh, he has stepped down from that position, and so, um, two of the managers are coming back, and, uh, we are going to be hiring for that extra manager as well, and so they're going through some training, and Scott's teaching them kind of the things that he did last year with all of the programming, and so, um, that's, Logan's been working with, um, him on that. And then, uh, for our events, we just have our living well, aging well activities that go on every day, and then open registrations for soccer, baseball, T-ball, and softball are currently going on. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Anyone have any old business? Ms. Lani's business?
Uh, the Art Association has the, um, elementary...
Uh, the Art Association has the elementary art competition going on at the gallery, and it's, we got so much this time, it's taken up not just the gallery, but the wall and the workroom too. So, if y'all get a chance to go see those kids' paintings, it's, it's really good.
When is it?
It's going on right now. The theme was last Friday night for the rest of this month.
She did have something I want to talk about. Did you pay attention to the county council meeting, I believe? They were talking about their public safety tax and how they overbudgeted for it, and, I'm sorry, they're underbudgeted, they overbudgeted for it, and money's coming in less. Um, we did not, our budget number is right. I know we took some heat in that saying we underbudgeted, and we were wrong, our numbers were wrong, but our numbers are right. So, we're coming about where we thought. We're gonna keep monitoring that, but that's not concerning our end, because our, our numbers coming right. Adam does a fantastic job. He knows how to pin swim and get it right. Um, so that's not something you really need to be concerned about at this point. So, it's still coming in good. So, we'll keep monitoring it. We'll keep watching it. I want to get a trend on that before we can do anything else, but we're, we're watching it very closely. But I just want to set your mind these, because I know it was a little, um, they're a pickle over there. So, just, we're watching that. Is there any other Miss Lingus' business? Anybody out there from the public plant I can't see?
Nope.
All right. I'll take the motion for adjournment.
So, who?
Second.
Motion second. On my favor, signature five is saying aye. Any opposed, same sign? Happy evening.